I just want it done.
All right, good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, February 4th. It's the meeting of the planning board. If you're going to quit standing, please say the pledge of allegiance. Sorry, I'm old.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And that thing is still in the wrong spot. I don't know why. Every time I fix it, they move it back.
It's all Ellen's fault.
All right, first item on the agenda is a special permit with site plan approval public hearing continued for 35 Main Street. And before the notice, well, I should read the notice first.
Town of Millis offers the planning board notice of public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 11, Mass. General Law, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 4th, 2025 at 7:30 PM in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, and the application of Nancy Cushman, Skippies on the R-3 Hampton Road, Norfolk, Mass., 02056. Requesting a special permit for with site plan approval under Section 13(c) of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Millis for demolition of an existing commercial building and construction of a new commercial building, restaurant, in its place for property located at 33 Main Street, Map 27, Parcel 10, Millis, Mass. Copy of the application and site plan is on file with the Office of the Town Clerk and can be viewed at the Millis Planning Board webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair. This meeting, this hearing is to be continued without discussion on Tuesday, March 4th, 2025 to 7:30 PM.
And the applicant just wanted us to read that their writing on behalf of the applicants requests to continue. It's because they were addressing some comments generated by the Conservation Commission application and anticipate submitting a response package to all members in the next two weeks, just to let us know that they weren't replying to some issues. All right, I make a motion that we... Sorry, continue the discussion, continue the hearing without discussion.
Second.
Motion is being made in second. Is there all in favor?
Aye.
And just so everyone knows, I've been sick all weekend. So if I sound a little dopey or the normal, that's fine. So, all right. So next item on the agenda would be discussion with interested zoning bylaw review subcommittee members. So we have a couple of folks here that are interested in joining the committee. If the Town of Millis has a zoning, a bunch of zoning in place that is patchwork, that has been, it was, they went through it, how many years ago, Mike?
Oh, 12, 10, 12 years ago.
Yeah, 10, 12 years ago. And we've overlaid and changed. And some areas have changed in their actual use over the years. So it was brought up that we should update the zoning to make it more what the town needs in the areas that it needs it. So we have here Wayne Carlson, Ellen Rosenfeld, Joe Tucci, if I don't know if I got the name.
Adrian.
Adrian, sorry about that. Butchered that name. And Kaz Pirkowski, which I got that right, that are here tonight to come forward to see. Actually, I don't know what the, do you guys want to have them talk? Or we can just vote them in and call it close enough?
Well, we have other people that aren't here as well.
Okay, no, no, I was going to read the rest. And the rest of the people who aren't here, who applied for the opportunity would be Tom Roach, who's a local builder, Dave Baker, who's been on a bunch of committees, and... Oh, I think that was it. Yeah, that was it, sorry.
Tom said he couldn't be in 90 seconds.
Yeah, yeah, no, Tom had gotten in touch with us. So that's, you know, and they get, yeah, they get in touch with us.
Can I ask a question?
You can go up to the microphone. You know the rules.
I do. Just microphone here.
Did you identify yourself?
Ellen Rosenfeld, 12 Evergreen Terrace. Joe, do you live in Millis? So I was told that you need to be a Millis resident. Do you?
He could be a liaison. So he could come, and he can, he can...
I'm not saying it because I don't want you here. I just don't want anybody to kick you out when they find out you don't live here. Okay.
But he could come and we would look for his input.
Expertise.
Okay, great.
Correct, it is the eligibility issue.
Yeah, great. All right, great. I just... Good.
All right. So is there any, oh, and from the board itself, Mike, you said you were interested in...
Yeah, last meeting.
Yeah, so Mike, who was the former zoning enforcement officer, was interested in being the representative from the planning board. And then we could have, if we wanted to have, you know, additional members, if there was interest, we could have a liaison from the planning board also. So that's up to you guys.
The planning board or the planning board?
Well, he would be planning board, yeah, so.
He could be zoning.
Yeah, I'm on the zoning board.
He could be on zoning, yeah. So that's up to you guys. I'm just opening the argument.
When he leaves, he's in the zoning board as long as he doesn't mind.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
As long as he's there. And then if both Nicole and I want to be, I mean, that would be representative of the planning board.
No, I just want, if you guys are interested in doing it, I want to make sure that, you know, I think the more robust the conversation is, I think it's, so, okay. So I make a, we can, do we want to vote on this and make a motion?
Sure. I mean, I agree with everybody that's sitting there and any other names that you've mentioned that are well more versed in this than...
Than us, yes. Yeah, guaranteed. All right. So I make a motion that the planning board set up a zoning subcommittee at the pleasure of the chair for, with the members being Ellen Rosenfeld, to appoint, sorry, Ellen Rosenfeld, Kaz Pirkowski.
Pirkowski.
Pirkowski, sorry about that. Joe Tucci.
Adrian.
Adrian.
I'm getting it right.
Like it's Steve's.
God bless you.
Remember, I told you, I'm really dopey today. Wayne Carlson, Dave Baker, Tom Roach, Mike Gianpetro.
Jim McKay.
No, I know, Jim McKay, sorry. And Nicole Riley.
But there's eight, a nine.
That one is a liaison.
Great.
Okay.
I love everything about it.
All right.
If we get three of us to show up, it'll be good.
Well, that's why we did a larger group because it's just, you know, with everyone scheduled. Now, you guys will have to do, there'll have to be meeting notes taken and, you know, because it is a, it is a...
We'll have this thing here.
Oh, yeah.
The owl.
The owl.
The owl.
The second.
Yeah. All right, so the motion's been made in second. Is there all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
So how do we find out? Like, do we already set a meeting? How do we...
You'll have to internally set up a meeting. And so, you know, get each other's emails, which I think Camille...
So we can act as the, we can act as...
I'll send out, I'll send out an email tomorrow.
See, we're all sitting here. Can we pick a date now?
We can do that.
How about next week?
I'm not here next week.
I don't have my little book.
Two weeks from, say, two weeks.
Should they elect a chair?
We could do that.
They'll do, they'll, the subcommittee will do that. That'll be their first order of business. February 18th, it's, oh, that's school vacation week. Does that affect anybody?
Yeah.
Thank God, no.
Okay, I will send out an email tomorrow. I'll get all the emails from Camille.
Do you want to do it during the day or?
And we'll, sorry, I'm not using the microphone.
That's unusual. You're not one of those people.
Would, yeah, would afternoons or evenings be better?
I'm free.
Gentlemen.
Joe, are you?
Afternoon, evenings, isn't it?
Doesn't matter to you. What's the 18th? What day are we on?
Tuesday. Tuesdays.
I like Tuesdays. Tuesdays are good.
Well, we'll start with that. And I'll just, I'll throw it out there and then we'll see what the response is. But I'll do that tomorrow.
February 18th, a Tuesday. We can meet here at Town Hall, 104, which is downstairs next to my office. That's probably easy to assign. Can you go in for the day?
Yeah, on that Tuesday, yeah, absolutely. On Monday.
I know Dave Baker's retired.
Yep.
Want to pick one, like 1:00 right now?
1:00.
Pick 1:00, and if anybody can't do it...
Camille said that she could book, we could book a room for her.
I'll call to take your posting. And you can be in room 104 because I know that's usually available. Sounds good.
All right, so I'll just, I'll send out an email to confirm to everybody tomorrow. That way Tom and Dave will know. Just make sure that they're available.
All right, good.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
We promised her she wouldn't have to talk to me.
The new bylaw books are being printed, and I should be picking them up Monday afternoon. So at your first meeting, Nicole should be able to hand out revised, updated zoning bylaws.
Wow, excellent. Are you sick too?
Yeah, we're all sick.
Oh, my God.
Now I know why I got the open seat here.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am 18.
18.
18.
Okay, all right.
President's Day is 17.
Tom, how am I lost my agenda?
Oh, I got one. I'm going to sell my, actually, I tried that one.
Oh, is that yours? I thought that...
It is mine. You can use it.
All right, next item on the agenda.
I'll just listen to the boss.
What time did it say, 1:00?
It is, he did steal my agenda.
All right, next item on the agenda was discuss the possible bylaw changes for May Town Meeting. Continue on that, we started on that last meeting. Temporary structures, signs, illumination, accessory dwelling units. There you go. That was actually two different items. Go ahead. Yeah, and you said you weren't going to talk.
The accessory dwelling units in your packet, we were just sent something from Town Council about the regulations that they've updated. So you have that in your packet to review. And I think they're working on, or someone's going to be working on drafting an actual bylaw or amendments to the zoning bylaw. But those are just the regulations that Mike had mentioned the last time that we were waiting for. So those have come out. And then the theme of floodplain, they've actually come up with a draft bylaw amendment. So that is actually probably the closest to being able to be pursued at this point. It seems to be pretty final. So if you want to take a look at that and then maybe make a vote to pending Town Council approval, recommend that that go to the select board to be referred back to you folks for a public hearing. Because that's the closest to completion, I think.
Camille, are you talking about the floodplains and both of them or just the flood? The floodplain just, that's the...
That is the theme of, yeah, the theme of floodplain bylaws.
This isn't ready yet.
That is correct. Those are just the, the updated regulations for the May Town Meeting.
Yep, thanks.
Yeah, the updated, the floodplains again.
Yes. So I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, on floodplain maps that we send this back to the Board of Selectmen to send it back to us for, so we can post a public hearing on this.
Second. All right, the motion's been made in second. Is there all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Do we know this, will there be somebody?
Bob will come.
They gave us a, today, Molly, Molly sent us a...
They sent a memo explaining. MAPC did send a...
Yeah, I saw them. I didn't know if when we have, hold a public hearing, will MAPC send somebody to...
I know Bob will come. I already talked. Between him and I and the chief, we've all been...
Okay.
The memo was fairly self-explanatory.
Okay. Yeah, I went through it all.
Yeah, it's something that has to be done.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. So the accessory dwelling bylaw, so they, they came up with some information on that, which I read, which was all marked up, like what is it?
Yeah, that's the new version of the CMR.
And Camille, you said that Town Council is going to come up with a draft bylaw for us or is that the same?
I have to find out. I had emailed and never heard any response back. So I don't know who actually, I assume that they draft a bylaw or I don't know.
Well, I think it may have, I think it would make sense for us to see the draft bylaw.
Yeah.
This is...
Right, that's like I say.
This is all marked up.
Right, we need to see it.
Well, this isn't a bylaw. This is a state...
No, I got it. They put a, they...
I mean, we could go through this and we could draft our own bylaw from it. I mean, if Town Council's going to do it, you know, if they're doing it for multiple towns, that would be easier.
Yeah, I think that would be, in my mind, that would be... Go ahead, yeah.
I believe Jay's email, last email, said that we put something on the books. So it most likely be something will have to be deleted and replaced or something like that. So I'm assuming, I'll follow up, but I'm assuming they'll be working on the initial draft for us.
Okay. Mr. Chairman. Mike, did you mention at the last meeting that like the building department or association or something that you're with was also working on something for this?
Thursday, we have a meeting.
Okay.
In Springfield.
Yeah, so we definitely want to wait and see what Mike comes back with.
We have a meeting with the, with the state. So building officials throughout the state supposed to meet there.
Okay.
So we'll see what they say.
Great. Yeah, we definitely, there's no business jumping.
Yeah, there's no such a difference between that.
I can take this with me then.
Yeah. Look at that. You'll be a step ahead.
I'll be ahead.
You'll get brownie points for that.
I sit in the back now. I'm way in the back.
There's a lot of red lines in here.
Is there any interest in talking about the temporary structures, signs, or illumination tonight from the group?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I think the building regulations, the state building code addresses the temporary structures. I mean, it has provisions, doesn't it, for requires a building permit up to a certain size? And then after that, you know, I get the idea of doing, if you're, if it's a longer term temporary structure, like some for the summer, if it's commercial, if it's these bigger wedding tents. But I think by what we have right now, we're just setting people up to ignore it because nobody that's doing a graduation party or any sort of party for a weekend is going to go through the time and the process to get a special permit. So therefore, they're not notifying the building department. They're not notifying the fire department at all. I think if we were to make it so that it's simply the building department and the fire department as it states in those state regulations for, you know, if we determine what's the, what's generally the average size that these weekend tents are. And then at least the building department's going to know about it, the fire department's going to know about it. But if the size we have right now, the minimum size that requires a special permit is smaller than the average weekend tent purchase. And so nobody's, nobody's notifying anybody. They're not going through this process because most people may not even realize that they, in the period of time it would take to get a special permit, they haven't even made that, that time elapsed before they know they're getting a tent that weekend.
So, Mr. Chairman. So there's two distinctive building codes. There's the IRC for one or two family dwelling units. And then there's the IBC for commercial. And there's two separate regulations under temporary structures, right? Temporary structures, anything that's 180 days, up to 180 days. Now, the minimum requirement to obtain a building permit for residential is 200 square feet. So if you have a tent smaller than 200 square feet, you don't need a building permit, whether it be temporary or permanent. The requirement for commercial is 120 square feet, just smaller. Anything over 120 square feet, then it's required to obtain a building permit. The issue with commercial is you bump into a lot of different other issues, such as parking, where you're going to put the tent, drainage, when there's a significant rain, how you're going to put the tent to the topography of the land, right? Handicap access bathrooms, when you get over, what are they going to use, a tent floor? Is the public going to go there? There's a lot of stuff under the commercial part that triggers, which I would support. I think, what is it, 400 square feet? In a zoning bylaw now, you have to get a special permit.
I think it's 400.
Anything 400 square feet or larger. So how that, I think why that number is used in the past is that's how you, in the building code, how you figure occupant load. In other words, how many people can be in a space is done by square footage. So when you get up to 400 square feet and larger, you have a lot of people.
Right now, it's five, yeah, it's 500.
It's 500. So anything 500 square feet or more, you need a special permit. And I don't think that you should change that because of the significance of a commercial aspect of the temporary tent. Call it temporary structure. You know, what's it going to be used for? Is it going to have weddings? They'd have functions? Is it going to be up there for six months straight? So you can have a tent put up, a temporary structure, up to 680 days, six months. So during that time, you know, how many parties you're going to have, you know, it can be used several times. And, you know, the issues of parking and handicap spots and bathroom accessibility and drainage, all that stuff goes to the planning board.
Could you, could, could we, could we put in the bylaw that if it was to be set up for like a short term, would that make a, you know what I mean? Meaning versus, meaning, yeah, like a, no more than four days.
You have to define short term.
Yeah, well, we could put, you know, no more than four days.
Well, it already does. All temporary structures intended to exist for a period of more than seven days, including air-supported buildings. Or can we also, we could, I mean, we can put anything we want in here. But maybe what we need to do is distinguish between commercial use and...
Residential.
And residential that is in, you know, for less than seven days.
Yeah, so your typical party tent in a residential would not impact the permit for the planning board. So that would strictly run out of the building department. Whereas it'd be up to the owner of the building. It's their responsibility to obtain the building permit if it's over 200 square feet. And they're going to have it for a weekend, say, right? If you're going to have a big tent, 200 square feet, you have a weekend party, right? They don't get a building permit, something happens. That's, triggers everything when something happens, right? The tent falls, there's a big gush of wind, if there's, somebody gets hurt, then it becomes mayhem, right? First thing the investigators do is check to get a building permit. Building permits required. So that, it's the owner's responsibility to know that. And how do they know that? Well, it should be the people who are renting out the tent that notify who is the owners that you need a permit, right? Or you don't need a permit. So, and that's really not regulated too well in the building code for construction supervisors, licensee for a tent. So it's regulated when it's a requirement of a building permit, then you need a construction supervisor's licensee. So it, there's a lot of, you know, everything's okay till something happens.
Right.
Right? And then, you know, well, I didn't know I needed one. Well, too late now. So, I mean, I would say that the biggest problem or the biggest thing we should look at is, you're right, commercial. You know, and we already addressed it up to seven days. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in favor of changing the square footage area or eliminating that because it's important to have, especially you're talking six months of periodic use of a temporary structure, which is a tent, for continuous functions, right? The fire department's going to want to monitor that, make sure, you know, if you have sides to the tent, then the fire department has to, in their regulations, when you put a side to it, a lot of other regulations kick in. Fire department has to approve it. You've got to put emergency lights, exit lights, fire extinguishers, a lot of different other codes coming to effect when you put sides around the tent. So, and it's all based upon the size for the occupant load, how many people can be in it.
All right, no, I mean, you know, the whole reason that we brought the discussion up is we've had, you know, a couple of, you know, weddings that have come up.
Wedding event tents.
Right, the wedding event tents have been, and unfortunately, people don't know. and then when they find out, you know, it's, it's, there's no way to expedite the, the process is the only, you know, you know, because it, all of a sudden, they go to rent the tent, and they feel, oh, well, you know, we can get it in, you know, a month. Well, the process takes two months to happen, because we have to find out, then we have to put it in the meeting, then we have to have the meeting, and, you know, and that's, you know, it's not, they're, they're trying to omit the process, it's just that they, by the time they get to it, it's too late.
Too late, yeah.
Right, and that's the, go ahead.
And, and it's also very expensive, too, because last summer, we were dealing with people having weddings and filing the application fee, the $350 fee, the assessors, um, it just was not only time-consuming, but it cost hundreds of dollars for these backyard weddings, which was kind of tough. Like, Tangerini's is already working on getting their tent permit in for the spring for their, um, tent that they set up over the summer months, which is different. But my concern, too, is more the event tents that, you know, people think they can have in a couple of weeks or three weeks, and then all of a sudden find out they have to reschedule their wedding because they have to go through the permitting process. With the planning board, it's just very costly and, and time prohibitive. Just if there's a way to get around that.
It, the companies who supply the tents and install the tents, it should be their responsibility to make sure they tell them.
Right, and it's still a time, it's still a.
Uh, probably 10, 12 years ago, um, the BBRS had detained, um, you know, adding a specialty license for tents, in other words, have special regulations. If you can remember, maybe not, but there was a, a major windstorm in Maine that, uh, they had several tents, they were having parties, and a lot of people got hurt, and, uh, there was no, uh, you know, no permits or anything, so Massachusetts was concerned about those type of installations, if a storm event came and people got hurt, you know, uh, what's the permitting process, so, um, it sort of kind of fell by the wayside to have a specialty license for that. Uh, but, you know, like I say, my concern is, you know, the commercial aspect of it, you know, the, the seven-day, you know, if you have a, a wedding, and you're, and you're going to have a backyard wedding, I mean, and the, the tent people who you rented it from should be the responsible, responsible person to tell you that you need a permit or not. I think there should be some protection to the public, you know, the people who go to the tents, right? You know, the people who are invited to these parties, the, um, there should be some responsibility to have protection for the public of those people who'll be in there, because they don't know. And we should, that's what the, all the codes and the regulations are for, is for, for public safety.
Go ahead.
Can I, but isn't that something, I know some other towns do it this way, it's just between the building department and the fire chief. It bypasses planning board approval and site plan approval and all that. It's just a way, like, I know, I can't remember offhand, I did research before.
Yeah, we, we actually.
Just do, it's between the build, they get a permit, but it's between the building department and the fire department, not the planning board.
Most of the towns that, that Camille and I researched do not have any zoning bylaw whatsoever. It just, it falls under the building code and the fire code.
So.
And the building code, I believe, says you have to get a building permit, right?
Right, however, you run into, um, you know, bigger events, like we've been talking about. If they, if you don't have a provision in your building code, you leave it up to the building department, the building commissioner, to enforce, okay, you know, building commissioner can send anybody they want to the planning board for site plan review, right? Uh, if they feel this, it's the, you know, uh, for public safety, say, oh, we don't, you know, you need parking, um, you're going to have, you know, 80 people there, so, you know, when you have an event, where you're going to have handicap parking, the building official has that authority, right? They can say, go to the planning board, show them a site plan, do site plan review, right? Uh, and show where the, um, you know, the handicap parks are going to be, where the handicap bathrooms are going to be, and, and your drainage, and how you're going to set it up, so you don't flood the neighbor, right? The building official can do that, and that takes more time. By the time it gets to the process, don't forget, you got 30 days to apply for a building permit. The building is about to get hold up for 28 days before they make a decision, 29 days. And then they say, okay, you got to go to the planning board. Uh, then that even further puts it more layers and more time to it. Whereas if it's right in your, right in your zoning bylaws, right up front, they need, you know, I know it takes time to go through the process, but if you look at the whole, um, process and the procedure, you know, I did it for 27 years, so sometimes it can be more cumbersome by just having to go to the billing department, and the fire department looks at it, by the time they look at it, then they make a decision, it could be well over 30 days, then they send it to the planning board, then, then you start the whole process there, it can be more cumbersome. I mean, my opinion is that if it's in the zoning bylaw, and then they know, all right, right away, you got to go to the, the planning board, right up front, and that could help applicants to get it done faster. That's just my opinion.
Okay, well, I mean, it's.
But remember, the, the ultimate goal is to, you know, protect the, the people who are going to be, you know, going to these functions.
I just think the way we have it now, the end result is that the vast majority of people are ignoring it. The building department's not finding out about it, the fire department's not finding out about it, and there's no protection.
Right, but, Mike.
Just like building.
I was just going to say, but.
How many people do work without getting a building permit until they get caught?
Right.
Till they sell their house, right? Then they sell the house, and, uh, then they find out they did a basement on a building permit, now what? Now, the real estate agent knows, it becomes a big problem, the buyer, then you're going to lose the buyers, and the, uh, you know, the seller's going to come to the billing department, say, we did the work without a billing permit, we thought we got a billing permit, well, you didn't, so now you got to tear the whole room apart and do all the inspections, which is even worse. But there's a lot of that, you know, the, the building officials can't catch everything. Most of the times, it's the eyes and ears of the, of the, of the people and the neighbors who help us out a lot by saying, hey, there's a truck over there doing work, they have a permit. Um, so, it's just, in general, you know, it's difficult, uh, to, to control all that or to, to keep an eye on it without the help of the public. And, like I said, um, you know, everybody's like, I didn't know, and, and the result comes when they trigger something like selling your house, then, and just like the building code requires a final inspection on all permits, how many times, when people sell their house, they did roofing, windows, or siding, something like that, they paid the contractor, the contractor pulled the permit, deal later, right? And they sell the house, and the, the buyer comes in and says, there's an open permits, yeah. You go back to the seller, say, you know, you got to close these permits out. And they find out the hard way. So, Mike, you, Mr. Chair, it, it, the way you're stating, it, it, the town's protected, even though we're having this discussion, the town is still protected because it's in the, in the zoning. In the bylaw, yeah, it gives us protection. And if the person chooses not to follow what's in the book. Yeah. Then the town is still protected, but we're just talking, discussing of trying to ease and expedite.
That was the only, that was really the.
Trying to make it go fast.
Right, it was, the question is, you know, is, is there a way to.
Yep.
Make it, you know, more quote-unquote user-friendly for events that were, uh, you know, it's not Tangerini's tent that's going to be up for six months, it's, but, I mean, all your points are, you know, well-taken. Um, you know, so it's just, I would think it was a conversation worth having. Um, any other thoughts from the group? All right. Well, I think we beat that to death for a little bit.
But wouldn't the committee look at, would we ask the committee to look at this, too, or?
We could.
Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, everything's on the board when you guys go and talk about it, I mean.
Absolutely.
Yeah. You know, is there something?
And the signs, definitely. Yeah, the signs.
Yeah, well, that was the other thing, when, was about the signs, is to, you know, update our sign regulation, or, I, I think specific, you know, changeable ones that makes sense, so. All right, well, um, I think we went through everything, and I'm not feeling really well, so.
Okay.
Set, uh, dates for the, from the, from the.
Need some soup, Rich.
Yeah, I had it for lunch, thank you.
Luca's soup.
I have potato and leek soup.
Lu- no, Luca's. I have a really good.
Oh, Luca's, yeah.
Really good soup.
So we have March 4th. How is April 8th?
April.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm good.
Just the approval of the minutes.
Oh, you have a May down here, do we want to choose May? Will that make you?
No, it's the town elections, May.
No, but above that, we didn't say follow May.
No, I'm just sorry.
May 5th is town meeting, and May 12th is town election, so do you want to do the 6th or 13th?
13th, I mean, that's, everything will be over by then, and the elections will be over, and.
So we do the 13th?
You know, hell, it'll be over.
13th?
It'll be swung back in again.
Right. All right, good. Um, I make a motion that we approve that from January 14th, as well.
Seconds.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, great, um, you have to be said, unless there's anything else, I make a motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion's been executed, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody.